Good evening, welcome to the May ninth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Marshall Planning Board. The time is now seven oh two P M. Tonight's meeting is being recorded by M C T V and we are holding a meeting live via Zoom. Our members here tonight are Katie O'Donnell, Nick Papastratos, Fred Monaco, I'm Mike Viviano, the Chair, and our associate member Scott De Castro. Also with us tonight is Greg Dimon, our Town Planner, and Karen Horn, our Assistant Town Planner. At this time, I'll make a motion to open sites public hearing and waive the reading of the notice. Is there a second?
Second, Katie O'Donnell. Aye, Katie O'Donnell.
Uh, Nick?
Nick Papastratos, aye.
Fred?
Fred Monaco, aye.
Yeah, Scott?
Scott De Castro, aye.
Well, seeing we don't have Kevin yet, um, why don't we start with Agenda Item C for the A and R Plan for ten twenty-four forest? Who's presenting that?
Rick, you're gonna cover that or you want me to do it?
I'm actually not that familiar with that one. My brother Kevin was in, but I'd be glad to answer any questions that I can.
Can you open up the plan?
Um, let's see, it'll take me just a minute to pull that one up. You said that was Forest Street?
Yep.
It was at ten twenty-four forest, so we said? Almost there. Yeah, just share my screen here. All right, from what I recall on this, um, I believe there's a definitive coming up also for this parcel at the end of Jedidiah's Path. I believe the purpose of this was to carve off the existing house from the potential subdivision.
Actually, Rick, uh, from what has been explained to me is the existing house parcel, which is above Parcel A.
Yes, right in this area here. That's right, too. They wanted to retain some additional land with the house. That's what it was.
Well, they own the second, the Parcel A and Parcel B. The assessor's office combined the two, the bigger lot, which is currently A and B, to the ten twenty-four lot. It had never been officially done by the Registry of Deeds. So what they're doing is they are splitting off the left Parcel A to add to the ten twenty-four, and the Parcel B is what will be, um, under the Planning Board review as the extension to Jedidiah's Path.
Any issues with the plan break?
No, because as the note down the bottom there, Parcel A and B is a currently or is this exist are not buildable lots. Parcel B with a subdivision plan would then, that would be a matter taken up on the Planning Board approval. Parcel A is going to an existing house lot. It's not being proposed as a separate building lot.
Okay, any questions from the board members? Any questions from the public, but just on the A and R Plan, not the second proposal?
Hi, my name is Anaya Fredo. I am in a butter on Jedidiah's Path. I do have a question.
Just watch your dress.
Yes, can you clarify that, please? Currently, the definitive plan that's in place is for the four point, four point oh acres in question, but the plan that we've seen doesn't break it down this way, so it's a little confusing to us. Is Parcel A currently the land owned by the Stratton family and the house that they occupy?
Someone's got their TV on live speaking, please mute yourselves. Well, no, it's actually the afternoon. If you're not in the conversation, please mute yourselves.
I think that's, I think that's Kevin.
So Ann?
Yes, hi. My question is, so is, just so, for my own edification, so we can understand.
Hang on one minute, I can't hear anything.
Okay.
You need to mute. Kevin Cantwell.
Fred, can you mute Kevin?
Yeah, great. You should be able to mute Kevin.
All right, I'm muted, Kevin.
All right, thank you. Okay, so I'll let Greg explain the answer to your question.
All right.
Yes, so just to clarify, we're just a little, I'm just a little confused. So is that Parcel A the residential home of the Strattons currently at ten twenty-four forest?
No, it's not.
It's not. So can you clarify what that Parcel A versus Parcel B actually means based on what we have as definitive plan in front of us?
We don't have the definitive.
Oh, excuse me.
Yet. This is an A and R plan, which is different under state law. Parcel A and Parcel B currently are one big lot. They are owned by the people that live at ten twenty-four.
Okay.
The assessors, when you have adjoining lots in common ownership, often get rid of the property line between them. So for tax purposes, it's much simpler to send out a tax bill to a single location versus several locations and trying to split the tax bill. So when they had first come in with the subdivision plan, we said, when, when did this lot get, you know, formed aid or when did it get changed? We've looked in the Registry of Deeds and we couldn't find it. And sure enough, it was because the registry or the owners didn't do it, it was the assessors did it. So my understanding is the person that lives at ten twenty-four wanted to retain some of the land because they couldn't really use the whole parcel. So Parcel A in this A and R is going to be attached to ten twenty-four.
Okay.
Parcel B is what's going to be focused on when we get to the subdivision.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the public at this time? Okay, seeing none. Uh, Kevin, are you with us now?
Hey, I am, yeah, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. Uh, so I'm gonna, is there any other questions from the Board at all before I do a vote for this? Make a motion. So I'll make a motion that we approve the A and R as presented. Is there a second?
Second, Katie O'Donnell. Aye, Katie O'Donnell.
Nick?
Nick Papastratos, aye.
Fred?
Fred Monaco, aye.
Kevin?
Kevin Cantwell, aye.
And Mike Viviano, aye. So that passes five to zero. All right, so that was C. Now we're actually gonna skip down to E right now. So I'm gonna make a motion.
You could do B if you wanted. That's fairly simple, too.
Well, we got everyone here, so.
Okay.
Let's just get E, get E over with. Uh, I'll make a motion that we, uh, continue the public hearing for the W R P D special permit definitive subdivision for Red Gold Farm. Is there a second?
Second, Katie O'Donnell. Aye, Katie O'Donnell.
Nick?
Nick Papastratos, aye.
Fred?
Fred Monaco, aye.
Kevin?
Kevin Cantwell, aye.
And Mike Viviano, aye.
And Michael, you'll also wanna open up the W R P D special permit for Red Gold.
I think I said both of them, didn't I?
Oh, um, sorry, the O S R D, not the Water Resource Protection.
Okay, and I'll make another motion that we open up the O S R D hearing for this same property. Is there a second?
Second, Katie O'Donnell. Aye, Katie O'Donnell.
Nick?
Nick Papastratos, aye.
Kevin?
Kevin Cantwell, aye.
Fred?
Fred Monaco, aye.
And Mike Viviano, aye. Just rep again?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, we've been working with our Conservation and Greg and, um, we reviewed the draft decision that Greg had sent over earlier today for the definitive subdivision, uh, and we don't have any issues with, uh, any of what was put in the decision there and, um, no real surprise on this O S R D because this is obviously what we've been heading towards. So I do have the O S R D plan up here in front of us that, uh, we will be heading towards. The roadway will be the same as what was on the definitive subdivision plan. Uh, the lots get to be a little bit smaller, uh, half acre lots, twenty thousand square foot minimum. Following that existing roadway, uh, drainage system has already been designed through the definitive subdivision. It will remain the same for the, uh, open space residential development with, uh, constructed stormwater wetlands, uh, within the low elevations around some, uh, wetland areas, uh, in the middle of the site here. Uh, drainage will flow back to those constructed stormwater wetlands, uh, with overflow, uh, to the cranberry bog system. Uh, with this O S R D, we'll maintain the existing cranberry sorting machine and barn in its current location on the, uh, front of the property. And unless Kevin has, Kevin Seeland has anything to add, I'll be glad to answer any questions the board may have.
Anything to add, Kevin?
Uh, no, not, no, that's pretty much it. I mean, obviously, we're working towards this O S R D, so, um, I think Greg probably might wanna outline, just to review. It's been a little while.
Greg, you wanna say a couple of words or you want me to go to Pat?
Um, no, I'll, I'll put it in context a little more. Um, so we started with the definitive subdivision plan, which we needed to use in order to get to the open space residential development plan, which is what you see before you. It took some discussions and stuff to get everything put together in a fashion that, um, alleviated the Conservation Commission, concerns with potential riverfront. Uh, it addresses the, um, property lines going through the cranberry operations, which we are trying to keep. It preserves the historic barn and wooden cranberry operating sorter uh, within the barn in its initial location, which right, is right at the corner of, um, Moraine Street and what will become, as I was gonna suggest to Kevin and Rick and company, Red Gold Farm Road versus just Red Gold Road. I think people might have a better understanding. The red gold is the, the type of cranberry, which is, um, unique. Um, this is a special type of cranberry. So because the way the O S R D was written, we couldn't use a yield plan because this property, because of the unique features of the pond, the wetlands, the cranberry bogs, the way it's laid out, et cetera. They would need waivers and under the O S R D regulations, you get your density based on, um, the number of houses that you could show under a standard subdivision yield plan without waivers. In discussions with Town Council, he did say, yes, you could use an approved subdivision plan and that subdivision plan may have waivers as your way of getting your base density established as well. And that's why this plan has taken so long. Uh, we do have the support of the Trails Committee. Uh, we have quite an extensive trail network, um, and some off-site improvements that Mr. Seeland is willing to do to both the south and to the north of his property that will connect it to a town sidewalk on Webster Street, which would connect us at Parsonage, all the way through the downtown, all the way to the north to Station Street, uh, along the old railroad right away, which is the, um, bridle path north of South River Street. And to the south, um, by Steamboat Drive, there is a connection, um, of the other railroad right away, uh, the other side of the railroad right away, which will run all the way down to Caswell Street, one thirty-nine. It also crosses the Pilgrim Trail, which then gives us connections to the Webster House to the east and to the west southwest Duxbury Town Line. Um, some of this is elevated walkway. Uh, in one place, we're putting a, um, soon to be decommissioned forty foot wide, uh, long, four foot wide with railing gangway from Damon's Point over the Green Harbor River, dropped in place, so we don't have any, uh, wetland impacts on the Green Harbor River. The understanding is that this would be, um, one of the options is either the, um, Homeowners Association, a, uh, private like the Autobahn or Wilands Trust, or over to the town. And my recommendation to the applicant was that it would be turned over to the town's Conservation Commission, but with the specific purpose of allowing the cranberry operations to continue as long as economically feasible. And that would be done through a lease agreement through with the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Seeland and the Grady outfit has worked very hard with this. As I mentioned, we have the Trails Committee support. We have the Historic Commission support. We have the Historic Society, support, and we also have the Agricultural Committee's support on, on this project with, the preservation of the barn and the cranberry sorter and the unique trails and all the other aspects that we are protecting. So where we are at the moment is the board can, um, vote on the draft definitive subdivision plan. That then gives Kevin, all right, here's my number, which is twenty-two house lots. He has filed the, um, O S R D plan, which has been reviewed by Pat and everything. Almost everything here has been worked out on the town side already because we've been working on this for several months. The one thing that the Planning Board should decide on for the sidewalk, um, question on the O S R D, um, Mike, you had brought up way back in the beginning when we first opened this. We're talking about no sidewalks on the Red Gold Farm Road itself. That was the initial proposal on my side to assist with all the off-site trail improvements and the trail connections that they're providing within the property. I have had a conversation with another board member and he was like, well, you know, I, I, I don't know, should we have sidewalks or not? I kinda feel like maybe we should. We had talked about possibly doing a sidewalk from Route three eight Moraine Street up roughly four hundred, four hundred and forty feet to where the trailhead would be, um, connecting just above Lot Two. So you can see Lot Two there. It would go up to Lot Two and then it would link into the trail network. And that would be the section of sidewalk in there. That would give people that are going to the barn a specific route to get up to the trail network. But I honestly, in this case, I, um, am not pushing the board towards, uh, requiring a sidewalk. I think the off-site sidewalk work that they're doing on Webster Street and the off-site trail work on the Eversource properties to the north and the south of this property, really, um, show the public benefits, um, for the waiver of the sidewalks on this particular road. And, um, on the W R P D, the only thing that we would need to address is have a condition, um, that, um, there would either be a ten thousand square foot lawn limitation or that the property owners, uh, in consultation with the developer, could install a denitrifying system to meet the five parts, requirement for the, uh, Water Resource Protection District. Either of those options, the project would come in around four point five of the five parts, um, per million protection for the W R P D. So that kinda sums up a little bit what we've been, and it was a long way getting here. But I think overall now we have a much better project. We have a much better chance of keeping the cranberry operations running because it's all single ownership. The town, uh, or if it goes to a private, um, conservation, um, operation, we're basically preserving, um, I believe it's a hundred and eleven acres out of one hundred and twenty-five acres of this property.
All set, Greg?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, Pat, do you wanna bring anything up right now?
No, the, um, the infrastructure proposed for the O S R D is essentially the same as they designed for the definitive subdivision. So it's all been reviewed and I was okay with everything they had there. Um, there was a couple of, uh, minor comments on the definitive plan that I, I had made an email to them on April twelfth. Those comments were addressed in the O S R D plan and Greg included those as condition in the, um, draft, uh, definitive approval. So, um, I'm all set at this point.
Okay, thank you. Any board members have any questions right now? Uh, seeing none, anyone from the public have any questions at this point?
Um, Beth has raised her hand. I don't see her because the, um, the plan is still on the screen.
Hi, Beth, just your name and address, please.
Hi, Beth Cassoni, ninety-sixth Meeting House Lane. Um, thank you for taking my comments. I just have a question regarding the setback to the water's edge. It looks like that it was originally slated for seventy-five feet from the water's edge. Is it more than that? It was hard to see on the plan.
Rick, I'll have to let you answer that.
Sure, yeah, I'm assuming you mean lots ten and eleven here to the Black Mountain Pond. The, the property line to the pond, is it about a hundred and eighty feet from the pond? So yes, it is quite a bit further from the pond than it would have been under the definitive subdivision.
Okay, great. And I have one other question. Um, there was a comment made about sidewalks on Webster Street from the, um, area that these trails will be accessed across from the Green Harbor Golf Course. Those sidewalks to Parson Street, is there any talk of adding sidewalks to Carerswell Street as a community betterment?
Uh, Greg, I don't think that's proposed part of this plan, is it?
Uh, no, it's not, and I believe that section of roadway Caswell Street is a state highway, so we would need, um, state permission.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else from the public have any questions? Greg, what are we looking to do with this tonight?
So at this time, the board could vote on the, um, definitive subdivision plans decision and you could close the public hearing for the definitive subdivision plan. And then, um, my recommendation is that, uh, at our next meeting, we would have decisions for both the special permits, uh, for the Water Resource Protection and the O S R D.
Okay, um, any board members not ready to vote at this point?
I'm ready to vote for the definitive subdivision. I think that that's, um, you know, to get that yield plan determined, I, I think that that's, that's good. And then I just wanted to comment, too. I think that this has definitely been a very involved process. I certainly like the O S R D plan, um, much better. I think it's gonna be a lot better for the town and the residents, but also for the homeowners. Um, I think it just, you know, makes things much clearer of, you know, what they own and what their expectations are for their lots instead of having easements and everything for the cranberry operation. Um, one thing I would say for the O S R D is that I would depend, you know, actually, probably no matter who holds the open space, I would also be interested in seeing a conservation restriction on the property. Just to have kind of a third party, um, to help oversee it for, you know, the future when, um, this decision is, uh, long recorded at the Registry of Deeds, but some others might, might not remember, um, what was decided. And I'd also love to hear a little bit more about the cranberry barn and how that is going to be managed. So I don't know if that's part of the decision, but I think that if the town's taking it on, I'd like to know a little bit more about who's going to be responsible for it, just so that we, um, don't have any surprises there. But that's all for the next meeting.
Yeah. Who, who will be able to answer that later on, Rick?
Uh, Kevin Seeland has met with the Historic Commission on this and if, uh, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the Historic Commission was interested in maintaining it. Yeah, that's right. They, uh, they wanna use it for storage and they were interested in maintaining it.
And I believe we have a member of the Historic Mission, uh, with us tonight. If that person wants to speak.
Uh, yes, we still have to go before, uh, Michael and the Board of Selectmen, to make sure we're, we're still on the same page, but we'd like to, um, have the barn open, maybe once a month or so during the, the better weather for people to come in, and see the three-story cranberry sorter and work on getting some restoration done and possible, and possibly have the Conquer Coach stored there instead of in the shed. Um, that's certainly a long-range plan. But we'd like to have, you know, certainly during cranberry picking season, we definitely wanna be open.
And that was Cindy Castro.
Sorry, Cindy Castro, Historical Chairman.
All right, well, we can talk about it a little bit later when we get, when we get to the, uh, final O S R D plan. Any other questions from the Board at all? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna make a motion that we, uh, are we making, are we making motions to approve tonight, Greg?
Uh, you're making a motion for you could close the public hearing and approve the definitive, um, subdivision decision.
All right, so I'll make a motion to close tonight's public hearing. Uh, is there a second?
Second, Katie O'Donnell. Aye, Katie O'Donnell.
Nick?
Nick Papastratos, aye.
Fred?
Fred Monaco, aye.
Kevin?
Kevin Cantwell, aye.
And Mike Viviano, aye. And I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the definitive subdivision plan, uh, as proposed tonight. Is there a second?
Second, Katie O'Donnell. Aye, Katie O'Donnell.
Nick?
Nick Papastratos, aye.
I think Nick missed some of the, one or two of the definitive hearings. I don't know if he's watched the tape or filled out the affidavit.
Scott to vote.
Oh, Scott's voting on this one?
No, not the definitive.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That's right. Scott votes on the special permits.
Nick, have you watched anything or signed anything?
I have not. I think it was the last meeting that I missed.
Okay, so Greg, they would need, they would need four out of four then, is that what it is?
Yep.
No, it's just.
Well, you need a simple three out of five, so.
Okay, so Nick, uh, Nick's not gonna vote on this one. Uh, Fred?
Fred, Fred Monaco, aye.
Kevin?
Kevin Cantwell, aye.
And Mike Viviano, aye. So that's, uh, four out of four, and Nick did not vote.
All right, so then, Mike, um, if you get the board wants, you could direct me to have, um, write, uh, the decisions for, um, the two special permits and that we would continue the two special public hearings to, um, May twenty-third.
So Greg, you're going to, uh, you're gonna write the decisions?
The two, the two special permit decisions, the W R P D and the O S R D public, um, special permits.
And then we're going to extend the special permit until when?
We're just gonna continue the public hearings and you can close the public hearing on the twenty-third, sorry, of May. And you guys can vote on those decisions that night.
All right, so I'll make a motion to continue the special permit for, Red Gold Farm for May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two at seven oh five P M. Anything else in that, Greg, you need?
Don't think so.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Katie O'Donnell. Aye, Katie O'Donnell.
Nick?
Nick Papastratos, aye.
Fred?
Fred Monaco, aye.
Kevin Cantwell, aye.
And Mike Viviano, aye. So we'll see everyone back on May twenty-third.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're gonna go back up to, uh, item Agenda B. So I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing for the W R, W R P special permit for Roach Brothers and waive the reading of the notice. Is there a second?
Second, Katie O'Donnell. Aye, Katie O'Donnell.
Nick?
Nick Papastratos, aye.
Fred?
Fred Monaco, aye.
Kevin?
Kevin Cantwell, aye.
Uh, Scott?
Scott De Castro, aye.
And Mike Viviano, aye. Then who's here presenting for Roach Brothers?
Uh, Rick Grady from Grady Consulting.
All of you tonight, correct?
I know, you're gonna get tired of me.
Yep, we already are.
Oh, okay, good. Uh, this is a interesting little project. The Roach Brothers Supermarket would like to do a hydroponic container to grow some of their own produce onsite for sale at the, uh, supermarket. Uh, and what this hydroponic container consists of, um, is it's basically a container. Seen it on a few shows like Chronicle and. Seen it on a few shows like Chronicle and whatnot, that there's a few of them around. And Joe Blunda's here, and you can get into a little more information on the actual container. But it obviously it has some grow lights inside it. It has self-contained watering system inside it. And they, quite simply, from a site plan perspective, would like to drop this into the front parking lot of the site. There are some perspectives of the unit and how they they're set up and how the produce is arranged and grows within the container. On the site itself, let me see if I can. There we go. So Plain Street at the top of the screen here, the set of lights in the intersection at Furnace Street, the entrance of Proprietary Drive. They're proposing to place it in this location where the green area here is adjacent to the drainage detention basin. It takes up an area of roughly fifty-foot lawn. It'll be placed entirely within the paved parking lot. So there'll be no increase in impervious coverage. There'll be no change to the parking lot's surface. It'll be quite simply set on blocks within the parking lot. There is a water container within the container itself that'll be used for watering. Approximately once per month, they do need to swap out the water within that. They'll drain that water from the container and they'll likely either reuse it off-site or perhaps even bottle that water to sell as a liquid fertilizer. There'll be no discharge to the ground surface from the watering system. Everything happens inside the container. There'll be one connection for the electric back to the building, shown where this electric line is here. Unless Joe Blunda has anything to add, I'll be glad to answer any questions the board may have.
Do you want to think that?
Not not particularly, just to remark on the fact that this technology is really at the forefront of farming technology. And this really, I think, represents an interesting opportunity for consumers in Marshfield.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Greg, any issues?
Ed Allen had reviewed it, and he actually picked up on something that I hadn't realized. In two thousand twelve, the Water Resource Protection Line shifted further south from what is shown on the site plan. So the entire Roach Brothers property now is within the WRPD. That really doesn't change things because the Roach Brothers supermarket is grandfathered in because their septic system was located outside of the WRPD at the time. The container itself is about, Ed did a calculation, and the concentration for that monthly container being changed out is about one parts per million. So so long as we condition that that container is either transported off-site to a designated area to have it dumped, or even better, if they sell liquid fertilizer, but not in that building. I think we should be okay with this.
So they had mentioned they were going to either bottle it up or they were going to use it elsewhere?
Yeah, they would dispose of it off outside of the WRPD district.
As long as they're not dumping it on the ground just outside?
Yes.
We don't want to see a big green.
It would be better if they did not sell the fertilizer in the building either because of its concentration.
Okay, Rick or Joe, any issues with that?
Joe, any thoughts on that?
None whatsoever. Happy to meet that condition.
Okay, great. Now, any board members have any questions or comments? Anyone here from the public on this? All right, seeing none. Greg, you have no other issues, right?
No.
Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion that we approve the proposal for the container at Roach Brothers. We'll add into the condition that the water must be removed somehow off-site and not used onsite or sold onsite. Is there a second?
Second, Katie O'Donnell, aye, Katie O'Donnell.
Nick?
Nick Papistratus, aye.
Fred?
Fred Monaco, aye.
Kevin?
Kevin Catwell, aye.
And Mike Viviano, aye. This is five to zero, thank you. So now we're going to go back to Jedidiah's Path. So I'm going to make a motion that we open the public hearing for the definitive subdivision of Jedidiah's Path and waive the reading of the notice. Is there a second? Does there?
Kevin Catwell.
Thank you, Kevin. Katie, you there? Katie's on mute. For a minute, Nick?
Nick Papistratus, aye.
Fred?
Fred Monaco, aye.
Katie?
Sorry, Katie O'Donnell, aye. I couldn't find my thing.
Okay, Mike Viviano, aye. Okay, Rick, take it away again.
Actually, I need to ask Gabe a quick question here. Gabe, were you on this for presenting this project? Because Kevin did not ask me to do anything.
I'm on it, Rick.
Oh, okay.
Jeff Delisi and I are here. Thank you. Thank you.
Gabe, do you want me to switch you to co-host?
Greg, if you could switch Kevin Grady to the co-host, can you hear me?
Um, Kevin Grady, okay. I see him.
Greg, if if you can also switch me as a co-host as well, I might share my screen briefly.
That would be Jeff Delisi.
Yep. All right, so Kevin and Jeff are both co-hosts as well.
If there's anyone here from the public, we will get to your questions after we've seen the presentation and gone through the board members, we will get to any of your questions.
Okay, Mr. Chair, would you like me to start?
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay, great. So my name is Jeff Delisi. I'm with the law firm, Orinberger, Delisi and Harris. Here in Situate, I represent the applicants Brendan and Noel Paris. Brendan and Noel are also here this evening. There they are. They show in the bottom left on my grid. I'm also here with Kevin Grady, our engineer. This property is located in the R1 Residential Rule Zoning District and the overlay for the Water Resource Protection District. I am going to share my map briefly here. Showing you guys, if you can see my screen, I think you can. I know this was touched on in the A and R discussion, but just briefly. Here's here's Oakman Way coming off of Route three A and Jedidiah's Path, which also comes off three A. The cul-de-sac here. This little portion here is identified as Zero Jedidiah's Path and is part of the application. As well as this lot, which actually, in addition to sharing this property line, has frontage over here on Forest. And this house is part of ten twenty-four. What the proposal is, is to, as you saw in your A and R discussion, to divide that property like this and to combine this along with the zero to provide access to Jedidiah's Path. The Jedidiah's Path is actually part of the Blueberry Hill subdivision, which this is a copy of the nineteen ninety-three Plan Sheet four or five of the nineteen ninety-three Plan, which lays out Papillion Way, which had later been changed to Oakman, and Stirrup Lane, which later was changed to Jedidiah's Path. This layout is about forty feet wide over here. And you can see the reservation parcel, which is identified as a reservation parcel because it was intended and approved in nineteen ninety-three at forty feet, approximately forty feet in width, to provide access to the land over here. Which is the land that's the subject of the application. And so I I think it's important to have a little context to show that this was actually intended as an extension of the subdivision road to provide access in this direction. And I'm going to let Kevin, I'm going to stop my screen share, and I'm going to let Kevin take it from here so he can show what we're actually proposing.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yep.
You see my screen and my mouse on?
We can.
On subdivision, thank you. We prepared the subdivision plan as Jeff briefly opened up the we did a survey of the property lines perimeter. We surveyed the topographic the topography of of the site. And we prepared the subdivision to maximum conformance with the subdivision rules and regulations. We had several preliminary iterations of this plan, and we contacted and sat down with Greg and Karen, the planners, a few times and trying to prepare the subdivision as best we could to to meet the standards and to also get their input on impacts to neighbors and fitting this site into into the neighborhood. The, as Jeff said, the site's in the R1 Residential Zone, it's in the WRPD. Oakman Way was constructed sometime in the early nineties. It's it's a twenty-six-foot wide way. One sec, I'm going to share a picture back here. It's it's a twenty-six-foot wide way currently. There's granite curbing and four-foot sidewalks on each side. And there's a forty-foot right-of-way, which it's constructed within. The subdivision regulations have changed since that time, and the cross-sections are such that it requires grass strips and various widths for various street types. And the design approach we took was to maximize conformance or to try to best fit to one of those current street types. But as you saw in that photo, it doesn't necessarily match. So we were, we found it necessary to try to ask for a few waivers while maximizing conformance. And that that's the approach we took. We'll probably discuss shortly that the subdivision was approved with a forty-foot way. And Jeff, what was the term we were discussing earlier today regarding?
I I was kicking around the concept of something that I've come across before, which is a common scheme. The 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 concept would be that if 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 the right-of-way area extending from the cul-de-sac from Jedidiah's Path over here was approved pursuant to the nineteen ninety-three subdivision plan, it it implied a common scheme. The concept would be that you really only need to adhere to the regulations that were in effect at that time. Otherwise, the the potential is that the the it would stick out like a sore thumb. So.
So basically, what I wanted to say is that I think that we can discuss the the common scheme aspect after I complete the presentation of of what we've prepared. Because there's there's a lot of variable iterations for this design. Although the design and the layout is very simple, we're proposing two lots and a cul-de-sac to best fit this design into today's standards and also consider the common scheme of yesterday's approval. So that that's going to be a discussion I think we'll get into after I do a short, complete my short presentation here. You reviewed the A and R plan. Where we're proposing a parcel A, cutting that off and making that part of the existing house at one oh two four four Street. We're proposing two single-family residential lots bordering on a standard cul-de-sac, which is pretty standard protocol. The regulations specifically say when in in the planning board's subdivision rules that if you're extending a cul-de-sac, you are required to remove extending it that end street, you're required to remove the existing cul-de-sac and reconstruct that. Again, we're merely trying to max, to meet the regulations to the maximum degree. We're aware that one of the items that the abutters have voiced concern with is removal of the cul-de-sac, and we'll discuss that as we move forward as well. The site is surrounded by other residences, as you can see on the site plan. Yeah, there's residential housing around the perimeter. There is town-owned land to the south here, a former landfill. We did hire a a site professional, LSP Company, to take a look at this lot for twenty-one E issues. They found no issues with the old landfill. So here is the existing conditions plan. Again, we surveyed the entire site. We located the cul-de-sac, utilities, drainage, abutting driveways, any trees that we that were near the right-of-way. We located the existing drainage system, which you can see the piping here. There is a catch basin at the end of the cul-de-sac. And basically, what happens in Jedidiah's Path, the let's see if I can get this. See all the water from about this point on this section of the road comes down through the piping. And then discharged us to an infiltration basin located on its own lot behind number one fifty-six Jedidiah's Path. It is accessed by a drainage easement and a right-of, yeah, drainage easement for the town to maintain it. This lot is actually owned by the town, and the town retains an easement for access and maintenance. The drainage basin contains an outlet control structure here that discharges some of the flows. I believe anything over the hundred-year discharges out. Actually, there's a two-inch or a two-inch weir. So small flows go out. And also, there's a large overflow, four feet wide, one foot high for emergency overflow as well as storms over the hundred-year. And that overflow discharges onto the Locust Property and down this what looks to be like a swale here on the topography. The site basically goes from east to west. This is the high end at two hundred and twelve. And the low point is one sixty-six here. So any stormwater that's not routed through this basin or any overflow to this basin basically discharge here. That's the existing condition. Proposed lots. We're proposing two lots. The slot here is approximately two acres or is two acres. The slot here is an acre and a half forming subdivision lots. The wrote, the right-of-way width is approximately forty-point-six feet. We're proposing to connect to the existing edge of pavements along Jedidiah's Path, which is twenty-six feet wide, and taper down to a twenty-foot. and taper down to a twenty-foot wide roadway by the time we enter the, the forty-foot reservation strip. And then we are into a standard cul-de-sac. The cul-de-sac has a radius of seventy feet along the right-of-way. The edge of pavement has a sixty-foot radius on the outer portion and the inner portion has a forty-foot radius. They're all, uh, stormwater is contained by one point five foot wide Cape Cod burn. It's pretty straightforward cul-de-sac layout, which I've seen, I know the planning board has seen. You know, and numerous subdivisions. So we're proposing to connect to the existing edge of pavements. We, as required by the subdivision, we are proposing the subdivision regulations. We are proposing to eliminate or remove the existing cul-de-sac and relocate it at the new dead end. We are proposing to a land, to landscape, to remove the cul-de-sac and landscape this, uh, remove, removal area. Because the existing driveways connect to the existing edge of pavement in the right-of-way. We are proposing to extend the existing driveways for one fifty-five and one fifty-six, I believe they are. Correct. Um, within the right-of-way layout and not on private property. Page for now. So the previous sheet is the topographic sheet that proposed topography. We're gonna discuss that on the plan and profile sheet. The design on the plan and profile. Particularly in the area of this short reserve strip. We tried to match the existing grade as much as possible. If you can see in this profile sheet, the dark heavy line is the proposed roadway. The dash lines of the left, right and center of the road. So you can see we're really matching up well with the existing topography. We're coming in at a two point three percent negative slope and coming out at one point two. And this is the cul-de-sac area in here. So this side would reverse back to the catch basin at the low point here. So those are nice soft grades, but they're, they're steep enough to convey stormwater without puddling. Anything over one and a half percent is, is even one and a quarter is, is good to convey drainage. One and a quarter is a nice flat cul-de-sac and would be able to get the water to this catch basin in this location. The existing drainage is we, as I alluded to earlier, is comprised of a storm drain catch basin at the end of the cul-de-sac here and stormwater from Jedidiah's Path was around the cul-de-sac and, and goes into this basin here. My understanding is there may be some puddling issues with that catch basin now. I think we're gonna have the opportunity to improve that once we reconnect and we have a two, two plus percent grade to this catch basin. We've analyzed the stormwater and this catch basin has the capacity to handle the runoff from Jedidiah's Path. As well as the newly proposed, the, the existing Jedidiah's Path as well as a newly proposed cul-de-sac. We are also proposing utilities. Utilities are water, gas, electric. Currently the water dead ends at a hydrant in this location. We're gonna propose to relocate that hydrant off of the edge of right-of-way. Set back far enough to allow for plows, et cetera. Then we're also proposing an additional hydrant here. This was one of the comments from Pat Brennan. We initially were thinking that we could just add that relocate this hydrant here since it's a fairly short distance, but it did bring us a little beyond the, the standard distance that the town typically approves. So we've modified our, our design to add another cul-de-sac. We're proposing to connect to the existing electric manhole here and add a prop, you know, potentially a transformer. The electric companies typically tell us what they would like to do, but I envision that that would add another manhole or transformer here and an electric handhole in this location. Again, that, and then the gas, existing gas is located here. I'm proposing to relocate it to the other side to get it away from the electric. And dead end it here and provide stubs for these houses here. Again, that utility is company will probably dictate exactly where those wind up. Go back to the topo grading sheet. We have done test holes on the property. We wanted to determine the feasibility of constructing septic systems on the property before proceeding to a definitive subdivision plan. We did get passing park tests in this area for lot two and we also did in this area for lot, lot one. So we've got the ability to site onsite septic on the properties. As, as I said previously, the site slopes from right to left. So this, this house will be set above the roadway. Roadway is about elevation two hundred. We're proposing to set the top of foundation at two oh eight. This side, this is the downhill side proposing an elevation of one ninety-nine approximately a foot below the high point of the cul-de-sac, but it matches the grade right in front of the building. And we're proposing swales around to move the runoff away from the front of the building. All right, my.
Kevin, do you want to get into some of the, uh, some of the waivers you're requesting first?
Sure. I love to do the, I, I'll just point out the landscape plan real quick, Mike. We did have our landscape architect look at how to best you know, landscape this removal area. So we've added numerous trees and we've also added street trees. We can go over the details of that. If, if, excuse me, if there's questions on it. On the waivers, we've asked for a waiver on section four oh five nine, D one width alignment and grades of streets. As I had indicated earlier, it's, there isn't a cross-section in your current regulations that match what's out on the, what was constructed at Oakman Way and Jedidiah's Path. So we tried to best fit what we could. So that's why we asked for that waiver. And then we also asked for a waiver on the use of granite curbs in the cul-de-sac.
Kevin, Kevin, just interrupt you.
Yep.
It's, um, when you say that's why we asked for that waiver, just to point out is the waiver request on nine point D one requested a waiver utilizing the tip, the, the type C residential street, even though the layout of the Jedidiah's Path road as it exists right now does not appear to be a type C street. All right. That actually appears to be either a type A or a type B because it's laid out to be forty feet in width. And the layout, the typical layout of a type C street is really to be forty-six feet in width. And as Kevin indicates in his note, he requests a waiver to reduce a type C street layout from forty-six feet down to, it says forty-two point six two, but in reality it's forty point forty-two point six, right?
Forty point six.
Forty, forty point six, yeah. So that's, that's actually a, a typographical error. It's actually seeking to reduce it to forty point six feet. The issue that I just raised though is as belt and suspenders, he requested a waiver from a type C street, even though we don't view this as a type C street and it was actually approved as a forty-foot wide layout, which is not a four, not a type C street. So in reality, we were kind of hedging, do we even need to request that waiver? And I think with the instruction of Karen and Greg, I think they indicated that they would prefer if we did. Additionally, uh, well, I'll let Kevin go into the second waiver request about Cape Cod berms at, Kevin.
Yep. The standard details in the, that you now have in the, in the subdivision regulations allow Cape Cod burn. I, I know eighties and nineties, there were a lot of subdivisions built with granite curbing and over time the plows ding them up and then the town becomes responsible to repair them and it, and it gets expensive, et cetera. And that was our thought process on that. We just, we wanted to get before the board and obviously have a discussion about what the board's preferences are on some of these issues and this is the process to do that. Whether we go with a common scheme or we go with what we've proposed in our, you know, as we've worked out with in our preliminary discussions with, with Karen and Greg and, and which is what we've presented before you tonight.
So additionally, just to jump in on the waiver discussion, because there would be one other kind of obvious issue here. What, what I view as obvious is you have your existing cul-de-sac, which we're proposing to remove because the regulation requires that on a dead, on a dead-end road. Uh, and we designed this to, to, to request as little waivers as possible. But in our analysis, we actually think, and I noticed that some of the abutters had raised comments about the cul-de-sac and the fact that the existing cul-de-sac that they would prefer if it was not removed. And we actually think that not removing it is probably a better gentler way of doing this. And we, but it would, it would be nonsensical to have two cul-de-sacs in such a short proximity. So if, if the board was open to it, what we were going to request was a third waiver, which would have been the waiver on the requirement to basically move the cul-de-sac to the very end of the dead-end road here. And instead basically construct what we're proposing to be a cul-de-sac basically is some kind of hammerhead turnaround that meets the, you know, the swept analysis for the fire department, but is, um, you know, not, not as imposing as a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, I think it would, yeah, sorry Jeff. I think it would tend to look more like an additional driveway off of the cul-de-sac where there's only two lots off of it. We're not extending it for you know, four, six, eight more houses. It's, it's two. So I think it would keep the character of the neighborhood if we were to keep their cul-de-sac and, and add a twenty-foot wide drive and hammerhead. But again, we need to get in front of the board with as few waivers as possible and have a conversation about what's gonna work for the town. And I think that's all I have for now.
Craig, do you have, uh, two of comments?
Just a couple. First, I did not hear a discussion about a waiver of eight house lots. This, as we counted, this is nine house lots. So you would need a waiver to have more than the eight house lots on a dead-end road. It does meet the new regulations for eight hundred feet versus six hundred feet. And as far as the planning board staff, we were pretty clear with the removal of the existing cul-de-sac and developing a new cul-de-sac at the end of the road.
Can you say that again, Greg? I'm not sure I understood what you meant there.
So, uh, the last thing brought up by the attorney was that maybe we could just keep the existing cul-de-sac and do a hammerhead. We have been for probably four years asked repeatedly by attorneys, developers, prospective buyers, et cetera. And we have told them from day one that it would be, you would remove this cul-de-sac and you would extend the road out to create the frontage for the two or three or whatever the lots came out on the back property here. So the planning board staff's still going to recommend removal of the existing cul-de-sac and the creation of the newer cul-de-sac about two hundred and thirty feet in further.
Great. Could there not be two cul-de-sacs if those neighbors really don't want to lose what they've been living with?
We don't recommend two cul-de-sacs within two hundred and thirty feet. We've had some discussions with DPW, the fire department and other boards, et cetera. DPW was in agreement as far as, no, we don't want two cul-de-sacs that close. The fire department in the past had asked the planning board not to leave cul-de-sacs in place. Because as far as emergency response times and stuff, they didn't like having cul-de-sacs. The new fire chief, however, was kind of like up in the air on it. His concern became more if he would like to see the road. If it's at twenty-six feet now, he'd like to see the road continue at twenty-six feet. When we had the initial discussions with the engineering group, we had said, you know, you're basically a type B except for your nine lots versus eight lots. And that's a forty-foot right-of-way with a twenty-foot road and you can use where you remove the existing cul-de-sac, you can use that to taper the road in. So that's kind of where the discussions were on this and how we got to where we are at the moment.
Thank you. Does Pat have any comments on this? Yep.
Um, sure. Pat Brennan with Amy Engineers, the peer reviewer for the planning board. I, I did submit a couple of letters to the board. The first was April twenty-seventh and the second was May fourth. They, they had made revisions after my April twenty-seventh letter and addressed the majority of my comments, but I'll just run through basically what remains. The first comment is in relation to the, what everybody was just talking about is whether you, you keep it at twenty-six feet wide with granite curbing or you go to the twenty feet with the Cape Cod berms. So that obviously is, that's, that's for board discussion. The, the second comment is again, kind of related to that. It's with the width of the right-of-way. They were asking on the cover sheet for forty-two point six two. It, uh, when you look at the cross-section, the dimensions actually add up to forty-one point three three feet. So they just gotta kind of make those figures consistent. Sheet four, I found a little difficult to differentiate between proposed grading, utility lines and property lines. Especially on the south and west sides of the proposed turnaround. The landscape plan, it, it doesn't show shade trees at forty-foot spacing as required by the rules and regs. There's no proposed tree shown along the straight portion of road that they would be constructing between the two turnarounds, between the two cul-de-sacs.
Can I comment on that one? I guess, you know what? I'll, I'll respond, Pat. But basically there's woods in there and they would be conflicting, but I'll, I'll write that in a letter form.
The, the existing basin is, is on a piece of property that's owned by the town. And they're proposing to do some cleaning and regrading in that basin to make, give it a little more storage volume. They, they did, um, they have since, uh, sent a letter to DPW asking permission to do that work. So obviously DPW needs to weigh in on that. The, the issue or the concern that I have is that when they regrade it. regrade it, this is, you know, it's taking stormwater runoff from the existing roadway. So when they regrade and if they just go and seed it, they could have issues trying to get that vegetation to establish in there with stormwater. Basically being discharged to it with every rainstorm. So I, you know, my suggestion was that they should potentially consider sod as an option to help revegetate this, you know, as quickly as possible. So we're not dealing with erosion on a constant battle with rainstorms. Again, the the basin is owned by the town. So there's some coordination that they need to do with DPW with with both the the maintenance and regrading that they propose to do as well as long term operation and maintenance of the basin. They the post-construction operation and maintenance plan refers to fertilizing rates and they have since added a sentence to that, says nitrogen based fertilization not be used in the WRPD. The septic system on lot two, the WRPD line, you can see it on the plan there, it runs kind of up and down. So everything to the left of that line is in the WRPD and everything to the right is outside of it. So where it says lot two, that's outside of it. If possible, I was just suggesting that they move the septic system for lot two outside of the WRPD. It's just a recommendation. And that's pretty much it at this time. Those are, those are the comments that haven't been fully addressed. Everything else, like I said, there's there's a number of other comments that they they addressed with this revised set of plans. So that's where we stand right now.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Any other questions from the board at this point? Not that we're going to resolve this tonight, but feel free.
Yeah, Mike, I I had a question here on the existing cul-de-sac. I guess that's proposed that that is, it's being proposed to be removed and relocated as as obviously discussed. The right of way, the right of way that's associated with the radius at the existing cul-de-sac, does that get amended? Essentially, I guess you would straighten it out and extend it to the new cul-de-sac or or would that existing right of way and the radius associated remain in place?
We're proposing to retain the existing right of way. So the the town who owns the way and the road would own the areas, the bulb area, basically. But just like up here, where you have a four or six foot grass strip in front of your house, for all intensive purposes, I believe that that owners on either side would maintain that as their own lawn in a similar fashion.
Well, speaking of that, who who owns the little forty foot strip? Does the town own that or do you own that?
That is owned by Jim Bristol and it's under agreement as part of the project.
Okay, so somebody else owns that.
Correct.
Besides the people that own the land, okay. Yep. Any other board members have questions at this time? All right, seeing none, I think we might have a few public questions. If Greg, could you maybe zoom out so we could see everybody for the public?
I'll start my share.
That will do it.
Make it easier.
There you go. So this is the time for the neighbors or anyone else in the public, if you have any questions or comments. If you could, please raise your hand on the video so I could see you. And then when you are ready, I'll call your name, just say your name and address, please. So first I see Anna.
Yes, hi, Anna, Anna Iafredo, one five five Jedidiah's Path.
Hi, how are you?
I'm fine. How are you?
Great. So what what questions do you have?
So actually, we as a Jedidiah's Path neighborhood, Blueberry Hill Estates, have presented seven pages of our concerns. Obviously, they have been shared with Grady Consulting because a lot of those haven't been part of the original definitive plan and they have been addressed almost verbatim on some of our issues this evening. So we don't know what the protocol is here in terms of addressing all of our issues or if it is best to vote for a motion to dismiss indefinitely until we can have our say as well and have the opportunity to be given fair opportunity to go back and address based on what's been presented. So I am going to say that we have a petition in place, a majority of our residents have signed it. We are not in favor of this infrastructure project and it's all been addressed. Greg, you have our submission and I don't know how you would like to proceed so that we're not droning on and on and how you would like to proceed so we're respectful to the group.
Sure, thank you for that. So this is the place and the forum to discuss this. I I don't believe we're going to be voting. I'll say we're not going to be voting on this tonight. So if this is new information you haven't seen, you'll be able to review it before the next hearing. So if you have some concerns or if you want to bring any of them to our attention right now, we're we're happy to to listen. And Anna, are you the president of some kind of association or who are you speaking for?
We don't have a formal association, but I am one of the butters. And we as a neighborhood group have just come together and come up with a compilation of all of our concerns collectively, as they pertain to the butters and the neighborhood as a whole.
So do you want to, would you like to approve some of those?
I I would, of course. So the first thing that we have is, of course, the dimensions don't add up on the waiver request. That's part of the definitive plan. That's part of Article eleven. Currently, our road is twenty six feet in width and we would like to have that stay as is. Now, originally, based on what we see on the original plan, and now I'd like to state that according to the Marshfield Division and Planning Board, Chapter four fourteen dash four, an application must be complete when it is submitted to the board. That did not happen. These, the application had different fragments that came in after, and we know they were granted extensions. We were privy to the original application, which should have been complete when it was submitted. So we're basing our information on that. So based on that, it specifically states that Article eleven is a waiver request to reduce the side of the road. And on page four of the definitive plan, a request to remove the existing cul-de-sac and pave in its place a twenty foot single access travel lane. And that would have been beginning at the mouth of the current road, the cross section. Now, tonight, I'm hearing that they've moved that to the entrance point of what is now Jedidiah's Path extension. So we'd like some clarification on that. If that travel lane between the cross section of the beginning of the cul-de-sac, which is the mouth of the road to the cul-de-sac, is that going to remain twenty six feet as you move forward and remove the cul-de-sac? Or is that a twenty foot travel lane? Because there is a discrepancy there.
Kevin, what are you proposing now?
Right now, we are proposing to taper it down from twenty six feet to twenty feet between the beginning of the cul-de-sac, the opening radiuses to the reserve strip and then have it twenty feet wide beyond there. That's what's currently before you.
Twenty feet, as it was stated, at the mouth of the current cul-de-sac, opening up to the cul-de-sac and beyond.
So we're going to match the twenty six feet that Jedidiah path is and taper it down to twenty.
Beginning, beginning where? That's, that's what is unclear.
That's across the cul-de-sac.
The existing cul-de-sac.
Correct.
Okay, so the existing land, as we see it, is going to go down from the mouth of the cul-de-sac. Currently, that road is going to shrink down to a twenty foot single access traveling. We find that unacceptable. We understand that that meets a fire code. However, we also understand that that maintains, and I'm not sure if the fire chief is on or not to address that, and I don't want to take away from him. But we've done our own research and we understand that that means that that must be maintained clear at all times. That's not realistic. Because even though technically it's against the law to park on a road, can you enforce that across the entire town? There's going to be vehicles parked in front of our road, whether it's that a neighborhood has a party. We have landscapers that come in, we have contractors that come in, there's snow bankings, heavy drifting. There is no way that that twenty foot swath can be cleared, that width can be maintained as such at all times. That's unrealistic.
Okay.
That's a statement.
On that, that's fine.
Also.
Kevin.
No, excuse me.
Kevin. Anna, hang on just one moment.
Yeah, of course.
Kevin, for clarification question, the tapering from twenty six to twenty feet wide is over, if I'm reading the scale correctly, two hundred feet in length. So it is a slow tapering to the twenty feet. It's not this automatic abrupt drop, correct?
Correct. And the twenty feet wide meets your pavement widths for your road B and C and the current subdivision regulations. So.
Yep.
But.
Hang on one minute.
Yes, go ahead.
We only received these in the office over the weekend, the planning office, and they were sent out to the applicant into the board this morning. So I would suggest that maybe the applicant have time to respond back in writing to these instead of going point by point for something we essentially only received this morning.
Well, essentially, no, we did send them in on Friday.
No, no, you sent them to the wrong address. I understand. We did not receive them until Tuesday. So they were not looked at or reviewed until.
Okay, but in all due respect, we offered to drop them in, but Greg was ill, so they were asked to be.
No, no, no. I spoke to her husband and I said I could receive them. And he called Friday to send them in and I said I was there till twelve thirty. But we normally, we can't be expected to review it prior to the day of the hearing.
I understand, but we weren't given any timeline where this was mandatory. And also, we were trying to compile our own concerns based on changing information that we still haven't received from the town from different permission.
I understand that. I'm just saying that people should be have time to respond.
Yeah, Karen, hang on one minute. Yeah. Greg, how many bullet points are there from Anna?
How many?
It's eight pages, Mike.
Okay, so I haven't, I haven't even read it, Anna, yet. So I I apologize for that.
That's okay.
So I think if you want to make a, if you want to, you know, pull a few points that you want to bring up tonight, then we all have a chance to review it. You know, that might be helpful because we we can't go on for eight pages worth of two hours.
Of course, but also in due respect, Grady was able to make their adjustments because they are more privy to some information and we're just citizens trying to respond. So I I understand where you're coming from and absolutely, and we'll try to work with that. But maybe maybe that's a motion to dismiss until we all have fair time to absorb all of this and respond accordingly. As officers of this town, I think that we should be given that right as well.
And we will have a, we will have a long, lengthy discussion. There's no there's no motion dismissed. It's not court. So.
Understand that. I'm just saying if I don't know how that works. So I'm. Yeah.
That's fine. So, you know, we don't just we don't just cancel hearings, you know, because we're trying to understand the neighbors, we're trying to understand the applicants, we're trying to understand everybody. So if you want a couple more minutes tonight, I'm happy to listen to a few more of your key bullet points, but I don't have it in front of me. I haven't read it. And I think the next time we have a hearing, we'll have a better understanding of where you're coming from after we have a chance to review it.
Okay, well, I'd also like to turn it over to some of my neighbors in case they have something. And then if you don't mind, I'd like, you could come back to me. I'd appreciate it. I'd just like to give everyone a chance to speak.
Yeah, so we, this is the truth for that. So if you're, if you're all set for right now, then does any other neighbors or public like to raise your hand on camera so I can see you?
Yes, I do.
So wave to me if you want to talk so I can actually see who's talking. Oh, okay, it's John. There we go. Thank you, John. So John, your name and address, please, and then your comments?
Yep, John Vazina, one fifty six Jedidiah's Path. So I I I'm on board with Anna's list as well, but I will just bring up a couple of questions and issues that are high level, if that's okay.
That's gonna be great.
Okay, so I have a question. Is this a public road or a private road that we're proposing?
The existing road is accepted by the town. The new addition will be part of this, an association. It will be private.
So it's a private road. Okay.
Starting at the cul-de-sac?
Starting at the
The end of the existing one.
Okay. All right. There, there are a number of other bylaws that the propos, the plan seems to be in conflict with that the, the plan doesn't ask for waivers. For example, sidewalks on both sides of the street. There's all the, the, the one that the town's engineer brought up about plantings. It just seems like there are more as we go through our lists and maybe it'll get addressed in the future. But there are definitely more waivers that that are not included in this plan. The other thing is, as I, an observation from sitting here tonight, is that you know, it it seems like there's cherry picking going on as to whether or not you grandfather something in or you follow existing guidelines, you know, what whatever is better for this plan is is what's picked. So if it's better to say, well, this is what it was in nineteen ninety three, we're going with that. But but for the plan right now, it's better in two thousand twenty two, we'll go with that. That doesn't seem fair at all. I I do have a concern about the fire and the safety and the fire engine turn. The cul-de-sac is definitely configured differently than the existing cul-de-sac.
There's a sharp turn coming back.
You know, it's a sharp turn coming back. It's not centered. Those are just a couple of highlights I have.
Okay, and you'll you'll have a chance at the future, the future meetings to comment as well. So I appreciate it.
Okay.
Any other, anyone else from the public here? That looks like Christine. You just muted. If you could unmute.
Thank you. I wanted to clarify.
Do your name and address, please?
Yes, Christine Vitrono, forty eight Jedidiah's Path.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to question why they are going to do Cape Cod berms as opposed to granite curbs if it's an extension of our road and an extension of the sidewalks. Aesthetically, I think that will look silly to have Cape Cod berms, which I I believe are asphalt berms.
They are.
Why not do the granite curbing and make it part of our road if they are trying to make it look aesthetically pleasing, why not do the granite curbing?
So I, I, that's what they proposed? That they've asked for a waiver, it doesn't mean they're going to get it. So that's all we could say about it right now.
I would just think that that would, that would look absolutely silly to change from a nice granite curb.
Hang on one minute. Frank?
I muted him.
I was just going to say, I think it would look silly to go from a granite curb to a.
Sorry, whoever Frank is, you need to stay muted. Yeah, thank you, Frank. Okay, go ahead, Christine, sorry. Oh, now Christine, I'm sorry, you're muted now, Christine.
I know. She needs to unmute herself.
Okay.
Yep, there you go.
All right, all right. Sorry about that. For the looks of the neighborhood, I just think that would look ridiculous to have all of a sudden a Cape Cod berm when it is beautiful granite curbing and nice sidewalks. We take pride in our neighborhood and we want to keep it aesthetically pleasing. And I just think that that would look ridiculous. So I I think they need to reconsider and do granite curbing to make it look nice in our neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Did you have other comments at all, Christine? Okay, thank you for those. If there's other neighbors of the public, I think Dennis is waving.
Maria?
I see Dennis waving.
Well, Maria's been on there for a while. She's got the raised hand function showing.
Oh, I I can't even see those. They're so small. You gotta like physically wave tonight. Well, Dennis, I'll let you go. Go ahead.
Hi, I just want to clarify some misinformation was provided by the lawyer in the initial opening of this meeting. There was no intent at all, ever. I'm an original builder. Again, I'm I'm sorry, Dennis Vitrono, forty eight Jedidiah's Path. And I was very aware when we purchased and very aware of the subdivision plan. There was. There was no intent to extend Jedidiah's Path ever. That was landlocked at the time. And the access of twenty feet was done as a fire access to the wooded areas, um, of which mostly are owned by the town of Marshfield. And so I just want to make that clarification because there's nothing worse than misinformation being provided. Um.
Yes, I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if this information was, uh, accurate or not. And I'm not sure if your information's accurate or not, but I, we, we know what you're saying. We understand that. So, appreciate it.
And, and just, Anna, top, I, I agree with, uh, the abutters and the rest of our neighbors. We do not want this, uh, encroachment of this subdivision in our neighborhood. We feel it is, uh, an unsafe situation from a road standpoint, um, and an access standpoint. Uh, and you've, you've gone through, um, almost two hours of engineering issues with, with trying to get this approved uh, with various deviations from subdivision laws. So, uh, again, uh, you know, there'll be more, more coming. And, and my last thing is uh, all of us have been trying to get the percolation test results without issue, and we have gone to the district attorney's office with the Board of Health because they've been unable and unwilling to give us the PERC test. Um, it was stated that the PERC test passed. We do not have, uh, direct information that the percolation tests have passed, and the Board of Health has been unwilling to give us that information.
I'm not, I'm not quite sure that's public information on the actual results, so.
It is, it, it, it is public information when you decide to have a planning board meeting and, and have an encounter of a public meeting in which you really shouldn't unless the PERC tests have passed.
Pat, you had your, uh, hand up. You probably know this much better than I do, so I'll let you speak to that.
Sheet two of the subdivision plan, um, set shows the five, uh, logs for the test holes that they did on site. And it has the PERC information right there. Test hole number two was two minutes an inch. Test hole number three was five minutes an inch. Test hole number four was nine minutes an inch, and test hole number five was twenty-four minutes an inch. So all the information's right there on the, on the plan.
If you wanted to get a, you know, a copy of the plan, it's, it is available for you.
If I can make a comment, please?
Hang on, we gotta go one at a time.
Oh, sorry.
So we're still on Dennis. Dennis, does that answer that question?
Um, a, a, at this point, yes, and obviously, you know, we'll have further comments, um, a, as we move forward to another meeting.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Maria, do you have your hand up? I just can't see you, maybe? Greg, did you say there was somebody, Maria?
Yep, Maria Gagnon, I don't know the full last name, Mal, Malmin.
Maria, you there? All right, maybe she just clicked on.
All right, I'll lower her hand.
Okay, anyone else that hasn't spoke yet? Let's see, it looks like Chris White is waving. Go ahead, Chris, name and address.
Chris White, one oh eight Jedidiah's Path. Yeah, I just want to reiterate, we're, we're all strongly against the moving of the cul-de-sac and believe that that would be just, uh, apart from uh, damaging to some of the property values of the immediate abutters because it would change the perspective of their homes on the roadway, uh, and the like. It, it would also require dramatically longer construction time, uh, disrupting the entire neighborhood. And if the, the process of getting to this point is any indication of what that'll be like, it's gonna be a nightmare. We had people, you know, going through the neighborhood, digging holes in our yards, leaving, leaving the holes there. Uh, the, you know, people thus, uh, plowing through, uh, plowing through the woods, uh, in back with, you know, just, we are very concerned about an extremely lengthy, highly disruptive process that will, uh, make the entire thing worse, not to mention, uh, again, the, uh, the clear damage that'll be done to some property values as a result of moving the cul-de-sac.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Uh, anyone else from the public?
I would like to speak, please, if anyone else doesn't have anything from the neighborhood.
Uh, I have, uh, Brian Fleming, you're next. I give you your, uh, name and address, please.
Hi, yes, um, Brian Fleming, one hundred Jedidiah's Path. And, um, I have two students who go to Martinson Elementary School. And I guess my question is, there was talk of reducing the width of the road down. My children currently ride their bikes on that cul-de-sac as is now. And, um, shrinking that cul-de-sac, um, and saying that it's a private road suggests to me that my kids will no longer be able to ride their bikes into that narrower road. And that kind of worries me a little bit. Um, and I, I, I think, I think people who have homes on cul-de-sacs, I mean, when we bought in this neighborhood, we really liked to have this, be in this neighborhood, and that's great. My house is not in the cul-de-sac. It's it's down the road a little bit. But, um, I think the wishes of people who own homes on cul-de-sacs and then just taking away the cul-de-sac would dramatically alter their, their values of their properties. And I also feel like, you know, if this construction project is gonna take four or five years, my kids are not gonna have access to riding their bikes in a safe area or on a narrower area. And, uh, I think that just kind of worries me a little bit. And especially if it's a private road, they could potentially put a gate and put two gigantic McMansions up there and put a gate. And then we have no cul-de-sac for the neighborhood. So there are guarantees for our children to be able to ride their bikes in that cul-de-sac as it will be new, new built.
I think Greg, our town planner, is about to explain private roads.
Um, so this would be private road open to the public. The children would still be able to ride on it. The reason that it would be private, open to the public is because the DPW for a good fifteen years or more now have not accepted roads um, to become public roads due to funding. We used to get more state money for accepting roads. And fifteen, twenty years ago, there was a recession and a crisis and the state decided that they were gonna reduce the amount of money that they were providing towns for road layouts. So that is why it is being called private, but open to the public. Um, private closed to the public means you would have a gate. That is not what's being proposed here.
Okay.
All right, uh, Brian, any other questions?
Um, I just want to reiterate, I, I agree with my neighbors. I'm on their side. And, um, I, I think, you know, there's, you know, my kids are only gonna be in elementary school for a few years and, and they really do enjoy riding their bikes around the cul-de-sac. So I, I hate the thought of losing that even for three or four years.
Okay, I don't think anyone put a timeline on it, but I understand your point. Thank you. Um, anyone else from the public?
Gary, um, I'm back. Can you hear me now? It's Marie.
Hi, Marie, uh, just your name and address, please.
Uh, Marie Malman, it's fifty-three Jedidiah's Path. I just wanted to circle back, um, regarding those lots of abutting, uh, previous dump. And my question is, is there any information on when that landfill was last used or closed off? And what are the ramifications when they start digging in that area? Because this neigh, this neighborhood also has had about twelve houses that I know of that have had cancer in the last, um, fifteen years since we've lived here. So that's a concern for me as far as the soil when they start digging up there.
So according to the, uh, according to Kevin Grady, there was a twenty-one E test done over there to test the soil. Is that correct, Kevin? Was it Kevin that was?
Yes, sorry, Mike, I was, I was muted.
Yeah, so you, uh, you did, um, some kind of twenty-one E up there to check the ground levels?
We had a licensed, licensed site professional come out the day we did the soils testing. We did five test holes across the property. Uh, there's no indication of um, previous excavation or fill within any of those. Um, actually, there was six. We, we also did one as close to the lot line as we could get without going over it.
So to try, to try to answer the neighbor's question, is there any contaminants found in that soil?
None were found and, uh, and the, uh, LSP uh, gave the buyers a letter to that degree, you know, for their bank, basically.
Marie, does that answer your question?
Well, it doesn't answer my questions as far as the lots were tested, but is anything beyond the lots going to be disrupted? And what about the soil that abuts those lots? I mean, who?
They can't go off their own property.
You know, if we go through the process of developing this property and it moves forward, who is gonna want to live next to a former landfill in a neighborhood where there's already been rates of cancer?
Uh, I think that's way beyond the scope of article of who wants to live on these lots. Greg, go ahead.
Um, our understanding is that the town parcel was compiled of several different separate parcels. One, which was the one closest to Pine Street, was a former dump. It was closed in the mid to the late sixties. I remember in nineteen sixty-eight, um, seeing the gate and it was all a pile of dirt. So the pine trees and stuff have grown in. My understanding is that it is a very old dump and it is unlined and uncapped. Uh, but there is surrounding town land that buffer it from both this parcel and from your subdivision.
And thank you, Greg.
So is none of the digging, none of the digging up there at all is gonna be anywhere near where that's all been sealed and capped off?
It's that, apparently, that dump or old landfill is not on this property at all. So they would not be.
I understand it's not on it. That, that wasn't really my question. Is it gonna be disrupted at all? I understand that the lots abut it and they're not part of it.
I, I can't answer it besides I, 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 they, they'll, they'll be able to dig on their own land. Not on town land. So to answer your question, I would say, no, they should not be disturbed. Do you have any follow-up?
No, I, I think we're good. I, I, I still think it's a concern. I mean, is the Board, is that something the Board of Health will look into? Because it is, it's, it's very unusual that this neighborhood has had such a high rate of cancer. So.
It's about six hundred feet from the lower property line of these proposed two homes to roughly the area where we believe the dump is.
Okay.
All right, so we're gonna be, we're gonna be wrapping tonight's meeting up. Um.
Well, we will continue the public hearing.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna skip. Is there anyone that hasn't spoken yet that would like to speak?
Uh, John, I see somebody sitting next to John.
John, we've, we've already, we've already heard from you guys up there, uh, unless you have something very important we must talk about tonight.
Well, what I'd like to talk, I'm Maureen Vazina. I am also at one five six Jedidiah's Path, so I'm a direct abutter. And this is in our neighborhood notes, but I just wanted to mention it because it's quite important to us. The reservation parcel, um, it kind of frames the end of the cul-de-sac right now. And on that parcel, we have our mailbox, and we have our big boulder, and we have our big, beautiful, mature maple. And we landscape that area all the time. We put mulch down and we use it, and we've been using it for as long as we've been in the house. And my neighbors tell us that it's been used that way for twenty-five years. The reservation parcel, I believe Dennis, when he said it was never intended to be an extension to more development. And I believe Mr. Grady was about to say that there's going to be woods on one side, which is just not true. Uh, our property, once they remove the, the end of our driveway, our mailbox, our boulder, our beautiful mature maple, in order to make way for a twenty-foot ugly road into two McMansions, that's a good name for it. Um, you know, it's a big impact to us, and there won't be shade trees. Those beautiful trees, a big pine behind it, that, that will be gone. And the, the woods that he's talking about is well into the parcel that the people are purchasing. And that will be bare, and there will not be shade there. And it's just, um, it's just unfair. Now, we have, we're getting the hit from three sides because the front of the house is Jedidiah's Path. Our property also is where the easement is to the drainage lot. So we own the property, the gravel road that, that covers the drainage, um, pipe that goes back to the drainage lot. And we also, um, have the drainage lot right in our backyard. So we have it on three sides. So we are extremely against this project. And uh, we think it's unfair that at this stage in our lives, we bought our biggest, most beautiful house. Maybe it's not big and beautiful to the developer who came by, who said that it's, their houses will be a lot nicer than ours, but it's the best house I've ever had. And this is really disruption to us, and I don't need it right now in my life. So I just wanted to say that. I'm sorry.
Oh, we, we wanted to hear you out, so thank you for the comment.
Thank you.
Um, Anna, do you have new information before we get to your?
I, I do. I understand we want to wrap up, but there is two things, please, if I may.
Yeah, we got, we got two minutes.
Okay, the Marshville subdivision rules state that a waiver request letter shall state how it would be in the public's best interest to waive strict compliance to our road.
Anna, is this, is this all in your letter?
Uh, it is, but we haven't seen that. And the other biggest thing is that I'd like to have a discussion about, yes.
So I, I asked you that we're going to get back to you at a subsequent meeting because we're going to take a look at your entire letter. So if we're gonna start reading off your letter, we would have started that a half hour ago.
Okay, but i- if I can just ask a question, then I think that is on everybody's mind, is these, this land is owned by ten twenty-four Forest Street. The people that own this land, and it's being sold at that address, the taxes have been paid there. Collectively, we would all like to understand, and based on what Maureen is sharing, this is a very emotional process for all of us for different reasons. Why is not this development being developed off forestry? And why is it becoming a hardship for Jedidiah's Path?
So it's not being proposed off of forest, it's being proposed there. And that's, that's the only answer I can give you because that's the only proposal I've sent.
I understand, but we would like to understand perhaps then for the next meeting, why it's not a Forest Street problem and it's a Jedidiah's Path problem when none of the land actually directly abuts Jedidiah's Path?
It's, it's not proposed that way, so I can't discuss it. If they want to come out with a different proposal, then they could do that, and we would discuss it at that point.
Okay, but if you own property and you're trying to sell it, it seems.
You just don't like my, you just don't like my answer. I'm sorry.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying that. No, you don't need to be confrontational. I'm just asking a very honest question, Mike.
I'm, I'm just giving you the most honest answer I can.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Thank you.
That's the way the proposal is proposed, and I, I can't ask them to change it because.
Based on the fact that you're about to possibly consider the derogation of our neighborhood and layers of safety concerns that we have, I think that that's something we should consider and talk about. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, I, I think all Anna's saying, yeah, absolutely, sorry. No, no.
Nope, you have to wait till I call on you.
We're just asking the board.
John, you need to wait till I call on you. Do you have something new to bring up, not to back up Anna's statements?
It's brand new because it's.
Well, we will talk about it the next meeting because we've spent a lot of time on this. There's a lot of information for us to go over. And you'll have another chance at another meeting.
Well, maybe next time Grady can have a little less time and we can have a little more since we live here, sir. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Anna. All right.
Mike, can I say something for just a moment?
Uh, I don't know who's talking.
It's Katie.
Oh, hi, Katie. Yes, absolutely. Go ahead.
I'd just like to speak to all of the abutters for just a moment, and everybody who's here at the meeting is that I just want to clarify that the board is listening to all of these. We listen to a lot of public hearings. We know that applicants come in with a certain perspective. And we know that abutters have a different perspective, and that's why we're having a public hearing. Nothing has been predetermined or pre-decided. We take in all of the information, we consider it, we take time, you know, outs, you know, even individually outside of these meetings, we'll be reviewing your letters and the documents and asking questions, and we'll bring those to the next public hearing. Nothing is being decided tonight. And we assure you that we're listening to your concerns. But also, please give us some credit that we are largely volunteers. We make very little money doing this, and a lot of us got into. We make very little money doing this, and a lot of us got into it because we've had an experience somewhat like yours. Okay, so please, just keep that in mind as we move forward.
All right, thank you, Katie. Well, well said, appreciate it. Um, so at this time, we're going to, um, we are going to continue the public hearing. Greg, what's the date for the next one?
I would recommend continuing to June sixth. Um, that would give plenty of time for information to be passed between all parties.
Okay.
Um, we tend, when we get things, we do send it to other departments. We also do send it to the applicant, and we send it to the board members. So on the public side, realize that anything you send to the board. Also remember that the planning board staff is here to ask, answer questions, et cetera, and can explain certain things to you if you want. Um, so I would recommend that we, uh, have the planning board continue the public hearing until June sixth.
Okay, I'm gonna make.
Greg, Greg and Mike.
Oh, sorry.
It's, uh, Kevin Grady. Uh, I'm just curious if there is any opportunity to do this, uh, have another meeting sooner. We have not, um, really heard from the members themselves. We will address the, um, abutters letter.
Kevin, I think, uh, I think Greg already said we're gonna, he's recommending to six-six, so let's kinda go to that.
Mike, briefly, if possible? Jeff? Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just as far as submission deadlines are concerned with respect to that, um, we plan on, uh, providing our response, uh, more than a week prior to the next meeting. Uh, and so I just asked the board to maybe consider if there's going to be responses to our requests. We don't wanna kinda get caught into this thing where, um, the responses are a day or two before the hearing, and then we have to continue that meeting for the next meeting. I'm just wondering if the board might consider setting some deadlines for responses, that's all.
Well, right now, we're gonna continue it to six-six, and as we get the, uh, as we get the information, we will handle it.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll make a motion at this time, we continue the public hearing until six-six, uh, twenty twenty-two at seven oh five P M. Is there a second?
Second, Katie O'Donnell. Aye, Katie O'Donnell.
Nick?
Nick Papistratus, aye.
Fred.
Fred Monaco, aye.
Kevin?
Kevin Catwell, aye.
And Mike Viviano, aye. So we'll see everyone on June sixth. Thank you for attending.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna move on from there. Um, I'm gonna make a motion, we approve the minutes of eleven, uh, I'm sorry, four, eleven twenty-two, is there a second?
Kevin Catwell.
And then, uh, Kevin, do you second it?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and then, uh, uh, I'll call for the vote. Katie?
Aye, Katie O'Donnell.
Nick?
I'm not gonna vote, I wasn't in attendance.
Uh, you can still vote, it's, as long as you review them. Or Nick is not voting. Uh, Fred?
Fred Monaco, aye.
Thank you. Uh, Kevin?
Kevin Catwell, aye.
And Mike Viviano, aye. Okay, those are all set, and then, uh, Greg, do you have a board report?
Um, briefly, uh, MAPC will be in on the twenty-third. Um, we are working on the economic development section of the master plan, uh, which was one of the reasons why I did not recommend, um, May twenty-third for the continuance of this past public hearing. We already have two other special permit decisions that we were gonna handle that night. Um, they will be doing about a twenty-minute presentation, we'll be inviting the Chamber of Commerce and various boards and departments to join us on the, um, Facebook, I mean, on the, um, Zoom meeting. Also, um, on your calendar, mark Thursday, May twenty-sixth, from seven to eight thirty, um, we are still working on the long-term coastal resiliency plan. Um, we're having the follow-up workshop, um, on that night at the senior center. Um, and that's for, um, discussion and figuring out long-term publicly what we're gonna do about coastal erosion, um, et cetera. So those are two upcoming events, um, that the board should be aware of.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Anything else?
Uh, Karen, is there anything else?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Okay. Um, anything else from the, uh, from the board members? If not, I'll go to a roll call. All right, I'll make a motion that we, uh, adjourns next meeting, is there a second?
Second, Katie O'Donnell. Aye, Katie O'Donnell.
Nick?
Nick Papistratus, aye.
Fred?
Fred Monaco, aye.
Kevin?
Kevin Catwell, aye.
And Scott?
Dr. Castro, aye.
And Mike Viviano, aye. All right, that concludes tonight's meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Goodnight.
Thanks, Mike.
Goodnight, thank you.